The meeting of the Broward County Commission is about to begin. Will all audience members please silence your cell phones? For those viewing from home or on mobile devices, thank you for watching. To stay informed about Broward County Government, please visit broward.org or follow us on social media. County Commission meetings are open to the public. Members of the public wishing to be heard on any agenda item can register one of two ways. Visit registertospeak.broward.org and fill out the online registration form. Or scan the QR code posted in various locations inside and just outside the commission chambers to register on your mobile device. A registration form must be completed for each item you wish to speak on. If you have trouble registering digitally, visit county administration on the fourth floor for assistance. All speakers must appear in person. No further speaker sign-ups will be accepted after an item has been called. Please show respect for others and refrain from making impertinent slanderous remarks or personal attacks. Boisterous behavior, including applause, booing, and cheering is not permitted. Thank you for joining us. The meeting will begin shortly.
The meeting of the Broward County Commission is about to begin. Will all audience members please silence your cell phones? For those viewing from home or on mobile devices, thank you for watching. To stay informed about Broward County government, please visit broward.org or follow us on social media. County Commission meetings are open to the public. Members of the public wishing to be heard on any agenda item can register one of two ways. Visit registrtespeak.broward.org and fill out the online registration form, or scan the QR code posted in various locations inside and just outside the Commission chambers to register on your mobile device. A registration form must be completed for each item you wish to speak on. If you have trouble registering digitally, visit County Administration on the fourth floor for assistance. All speakers must appear in person. No further speaker signups will be accepted after an item has been called. Please show respect for others and refrain from making impertinent slanderous remarks or personal attacks. Boisterous behavior, including applause, booing, and cheering is not permitted. Thank you for joining us. The meeting will begin shortly.
Okay, good morning, everybody. We'd like to start this meeting. If everybody could have a seat, that would be appreciated. Commissioner Geller, come on up here. I was just telling Steve to come on up. Okay, good morning, everybody. This is barely going through. So soft, and I'm loud. All ready? Good morning, everybody. This is Broward County Board of County Commissioners meeting of Thursday, August 21st, 2025. It is slowly getting quieter. Thank you very much. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like Bob Melton, who was greeting all our Doj guests, and I appreciate the tone you set. So, thank you very much.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please remain standing. It's customary that we observe a moment of silence in honor of notable persons from our community who have recently passed. Colleagues, does anyone have someone you'd like to recognize? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you very, because we've been on recess, I just want to recognize a few folks. We lost a Pompano Beach pioneer, Lulabel Clark, longtime pioneer of Pompano Beach, and she passed away at the age of 103. And her husband, I think, lived to be 106. So, great genes in the Clark family. Also Tyler Chappell's father. A lot of us know Tyler very well. Edwin Hugh Chappell Jr. passed away as well this past summer and served on several city boards and county boards, and just wanted to remember the Tyler family. And then lastly, just found out yesterday that the immediate past mayor of Hillsborough Beach, Deb Tarrant, lost her husband, Rich. So, wanted to just keep everybody in their prayers if you can. Thank you, Mayor.
Senator Rich? Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to everyone. I would like to just recognize Mayor Sam Bojlin of North Lauderdale. It's his father that passed, and just won it at 94, so he's lived a good life. The family, no, he did, so they're not sad, 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 but whenever you lose someone, you feel it. So, I just wanted to acknowledge my friend and tell him memories are forever and they're close. There was, I don't know if anyone recognized or know about it, there was a car accident on wherever, and six members of one family passed, and they live in North Lauderdale also. And I just wanted to acknowledge their young family members, and six of them lost their lives. So, I wanted to let them know they're not forgotten, and this commissioner and now my colleagues are all thinking about the family. Okay? So, hang tough, and God bless you all, and thank you all for listening.
Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, and I know Commissioner Rogers is familiar with Lloyd McGee, kind of slipped me for a minute, and he was co-owner of Marshes Cafe, so he passed away from complications of diabetes. So, I want to keep his family in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a moment to recognize my baseball coach. Yeah, I know. From South Broward, Coach Leonard Cook, who the South Broward Field is named after. More than that, he was a mentor to young men, and he is, it's a sad day for all the Bulldogs in the county, for South Broward Bulldogs. So, Coach Leonard Cook, you'll be missed. With that, let's honor all the brave men and women who have served and continue to serve in our armed forces, both here and abroad, and thank them for their service, and let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Please take your seats. I had an arm. Okay, I want to welcome everybody back. Good to see everybody. Hope everybody had a great summer. I think we started off at the cricket, starting the summer off. I got a chance to throw the first pitch. How'd I do? I did all right.
Really, really good.
You know, for anybody who has ever thrown, this is back to baseball, with cricket, you can't bend your arm, so you have to throw it with a straight arm. That's, it's very weird to throw it that way.
They're straight, too.
Yeah.
They're straight, white flip on everything.
Yeah. But I threw a strike. Yeah. A lot of serious things happened during the summer. We got dozed a little bit, but we were doing okay. We've got three proclamations and a presentation today. But I also first want to thank Lamar Fisher for his selections on the music, "Man in the Mirror," very good by Michael Jackson, and "Don't Worry, Be Happy," that's kind of your, that's kind of you. That's kind of you, just chill. Yeah. Good choices and very good breakfast. We have three proclamations today, and the first one is to honor Everglades Holiday Park. And Senator Rich is going to do that. I'll just mention, I was out there the other day. It looks great. Looks great. Before she gets down there, is there any plan on, you know, I know all the camping is taken out of there right now. Any plan to return to that, or no? You can tell us in a minute. But it looks good out there. And I know it's become like a main place for a lot of our cruise passengers to come to.
We have some new things that we're coming down the bikes.
And the Gator bikes.
I'd like to ask Dan West to come up as well. And Stacy, I saw you here. Is she here? Okay, this is a very espresso proclamation to me, I have to tell you. I was trying to get a picture up of when I was out there one time back in 2017, when they had all the albino animals that they have out there, all draped around me, and it was quite an experience. But I have to say, it has been like one of the highlights of my, there it is, right there, right there. There they are.
Like a pro.
Yeah, right. My granddaughter was with me. She was sitting next to me with another one on her lap. But this is a very special place, and I'm just so glad that in all my years of public service, of public office, I have been able to represent Everglades Holiday Park. And these two wonderful people, Flint and Courtney Bridges, they are, they are the best. They are. And I don't say that often, so I, you know, some people use that word all the time, but they really are, they have such dedication to what they're doing, and they have created something that is probably not anywhere else in the world. And we have so many people that take advantage of it and come out and see it, and from our cruise ships, our students in our schools, just the population here, people just flock there now. And there have been so many, so many improvements, and that's due to a partnership. And the head of this partnership is Dan West, and I want to always just thank him for the incredible job that he has done in really transforming this park. Some work still left to do always, but it's just amazing. So, it's a special honor today to recognize them for an honor that they received as a result of all of this and their hard work and their staff. So, I'd like to just read this. Whereas Everglades Holiday Park is Broward County's gateway to the Everglades, welcoming more than 400,000 guests annually, think about that, including visitors and tourists from around the globe to experience this unique ecosystem firsthand. And whereas Broward County Parks And whereas Broward County Parks and Recreation began managing Everglades Holiday Park in June 2012, with Bridges Everglades LLC serving as the county's concessionaire, offering airboat rides, alligator shows, animal encounters, and more, continuing a tradition started by George M. Bridges, who began offering airboat rides through the Everglades as early as 1982, with George's son Clint Bridges and his wife Courtney running the day-to-day operations at Everglades Holiday Park. And whereas Parks and Recreation staff maintain the grounds and security and offer educational environmental programming. And whereas Broward County has committed approximately $19 million in general capital and 2,000 bond funds on various improvements and repairs at Everglades Holiday Park, as well as $2.7 million from Broward Boaters Improvement Program. And whereas, as a result, Everglades Holiday Park now features a two-lane vehicle bridge, an integral pedestrian walk, new boat ramps, a levee wall, docks, shoreline stabilization, parking, welcome plaza, shelter, and restrooms, in addition to a new $200,000 public art and design project funded by the county's cultural division. And whereas Everglades Holiday Park operates private and group airboat excursions, providing daily narrated airboat tours that interpret Everglades history, ecology, and restoration and preservation for visitors of all ages, along with structured field trip programs for local Broward County schools and camps. And whereas Everglades Holiday Park continues to build its customer base through marketing prowess, offering longer tours, captivating alligator shows, and animal encounters, as you can see, which result in positive guest reviews and return customers. And whereas Everglades Holiday Park was recognized for its outstanding visitor experience and received a 2025 TripAdvisor Traveler's Choice Award, placing it among the top 10% of attractions worldwide, reflecting the park's consistently high traveler ratings and guest reviews. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Broward County Commissioners of Broward County, Florida, that the Board hereby designates August 21st, 2025, as Everglades Holiday Park Day throughout Broward County and encourages both residents and visitors to visit Broward's gateway to the Everglades. Congratulations.
Thank you, all the commissioners. Thank you, Dan West. Thank you, Nan. I know you called us the best, but you truly are. You know, we've been doing this a long time. We built our first airboat in 1982 in our backyard in what's now Southwest Ranches, but at the time, it was unincorporated Fort Lauderdale. So, we've been able to do a lot of things and most importantly, show a lot of people the beauty of the Everglades. And I'll end with this. There is only one Everglades, but there's only one place to see it, and that's Everglades Holiday Park. So, thank you so much for this proclamation. We're greatly appreciated. And thank you for the support of everybody in this room.
Yep. Thank you first. Okay, thank you again for that. And keep up the great work out there. Okay, you too. Thank you. Our next proclamation is for Senior Citizens Day, and it will be presented by Commissioner Rogers. And it's going to be presented to Jean F.'s from the Senior Domino Group in Lauderdale Lakes, Sandra Royer, Senior Domino Group in Lauderdale Lakes, Vivia Spence, same group, Fritz Howell, same group, Newton Dawson, same group, and presented by the commissioner. All yours, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And Nan, I was trying to get your attention because it's not just seniors in my district now. I wanted you to represent the seniors on the dais. There are some that don't want to be classified as a senior. You understand, we own it. All right, very good. I just wanted to make that very clear, that we know who we are. And there's a song, a Jamaican song that says, "Over 55 and loving it." All right? So, we're over 55 and we're loving it. So, I saw Ron Book, and I know he's only 40. But if he would disclose today why he's looking so good, let me go on with what you asked me to do, Mr. Mayor. And of course, yes, I'm proud of a Senior Domino Group, and they represent the state of Florida, not just the city of Lauderdale Lakes. Most of them gather in the city of Lauderdale Lakes. But I'll share that Jean Else is from Lauderdale Hill, Sandra Royer is from Tamrac, I believe. And let me say the others that are here. Let me say Vivia Spence, Fritz Howell, and his lovely wife and family, Newton Dawson. And of course, presented by me, just wanted to recognize everyone. Is there a proclamation that I'm missing? It's not in my hand. Is there a proclamation that's not in my hand that I'm supposed to be presenting today? I was hoping by playing around just a little bit, it will just pop up. Thank you. Those that are here from the senior group, the Domino Group, can you join me, please? I'm so proud to get folks from all the way in central Broward to come down to Fort Lauderdale. So, whenever I get them to join me. Winners here of the last tournament. Thanks, Dwight. Okay, this proclamation was requested by me and signed by our mayor. Whereas National Senior Citizens Day first proclaimed in 1988 is a time to recognize and honor the invaluable contributions of older Americans to our communities and to the nation. And whereas throughout history, senior citizens leave a legacy of priceless contribution, their continued impact give us ample reason to dedicate a special day in their honor. And whereas with improved health care and more years of productivity, and that mean being leisure, hanging around, playing dominoes, playing cards, whatever it is that you choose to do, older citizens continue to serve as vital links to our heritage and shared purpose as individual and as a country. And whereas seniors are leaders, innovators, mentors, public servants, and they fill a gap because there are a lot of things they do for us. They are the biggest volunteers that we could ask for. I don't know about you. I know they are my support, strong support. So, I thank my seniors, those that are here and those that are not. Broward County continues to be that benefactor of the wisdom and experience of its senior employees ages 62 and over. Now, they are putting me closer to that number. Okay. Whereas in the public and private sector, senior citizens have given countless years of service in administration, business, finance, public safety, education, communication, infrastructure, transportation, and cultural arts. And whereas more than 4.5 million seniors are serving as volunteers in various programs and projects that benefit all of our society. And whereas the needs exist, seniors are making their presence known for their own good and that of others. Essentially, senior citizens are the bridge connecting our past and our future. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Broward County Board of County Commissioners that the Board hereby designate Thursday, August 21st, 2025, as Senior Citizens Day in Broward County, Florida, as we express our gratitude to the generations who have worked hard. They had a vision and perseverance and have paved the way for all of us. We thank you for all you have done and will continue to do as you all are looking younger, younger by the day. Join the club. Teacher, use the teacher. You have one second to speak on behalf of your group.
Well, thank you. We just want to say on behalf of the Senior Domino Group, we really appreciate this lovely lady, Commissioner Hayes Rogers, and all the work put in to make this proclamation a success. We just want to say on behalf of the seniors, thank you. Thank you.
December, are you inviting anyone to anything? What do you guys do in December?
In December, we have tournaments sometimes.
Right.
In December, yeah.
And it's open to anyone that plays domino in Broward County?
Oh, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Male or female?
Okay, you got it.
Okay.
But you have to be over 55?
Absolutely.
All right.
Are you guys, are you guys the champs? Are we looking at all the champs here?
Yes.
All the champs. Okay. Who's the last year's champ?
What position, how did you place last year?
Third.
He came in third last year.
Okay.
My first place isn't here.
Oh, okay.
Teach? Photo up.
Okay, before we move on to the agenda, we have a special presentation. Senator Tina Polsky is here, and she represents large parts of Broward up in Tallahassee, is here to discuss fentanyl awareness and Education Day. From Broward County, has tried to be a national leader in fighting against addiction, thanks to Drew and team. And on many of our agendas, we have settlements with opioid companies that help us treat this illness and fight addiction. Still, fentanyl remains a highly dangerous addictive and deadly challenge in our community. Senator Polsky, thank you very much for being here today. And you have a couple of slides?
I do.
Okay. Say that again. Okay.
Perfect. Well, that was a smooth technology. Oops.
And that's rare for this.
Well, we'll just start with that one.
We're showing off for you.
Thank you all for having me. Hi, everyone. I am State Senator Tina Polsky. I represent the northwest section of Broward County, Coral Springs, Coconut Creek, Margate, Parkland, the western sides of Pompano and Deerfield. And I go into Palm Beach County for Southern Boca Raton. Very happy to be here. Thank you for giving me the time. I was very honored to pass a bill this past session to create an annual Fentanyl Awareness Day, which was brought to me by a Broward public school student whose family member had died from fentanyl. So, an important note to everyone that, you know, if you have a good idea for legislation, please come to us because that's how the best ideas are born. And of course, they are so happy that we have this awareness. So, today is the Awareness Day. So, I'm very lucky that I could be here today to share it with you. We sent all of you and pretty much everyone we know graphics and a video and different things so that you all could put it out on the Broward County website, social media, emails, and your own personal ones. I would really appreciate everybody's participation in Fentanyl Awareness Day. I'm not going to go through all these slides. I guess if your audience, you can read them. But fentanyl is such a dangerous drug in the sense that like one tiny granule of salt size could kill you. And we probably all know a family who has been affected by this. And I think what's so important for the community is that there are people who are not, who we would consider drug addicts. They might take an Adderall from a friend at college that's not a prescription, a Xanax, something that you wouldn't think is a dangerous drug. And with a speck of fentanyl in it, which many of these street drugs have, they could die. And so, you know, there have been unfortunately too many instances. We had over 5,000 deaths in the state. And so, it's just so important that people are aware. What we are trying to do is just give everyone the tools with all the kids going back to college or starting college. If they just know that if they take a drug that someone hands them, even though it might not be something that they consider dangerous, if they don't know where it came from and if it didn't come from a pharmacy, then it could be laced with fentanyl. So, just don't take it. But unless they're aware of that, they don't know. And so many young people have lost their lives as a result. Some of the prevention possibilities. Two years ago, I was honored to pass another bill related to this to allow fentanyl test strips to become legal in the state. Prior to that, they were not because they were considered drug paraphernalia. But through a couple of years of doing this and with Representative Honchowski, we were able to pass this bill two years ago. So, now, another great thing is, look, we know people are going to take drugs that they shouldn't take. At least test it. And then you'll know. They're inexpensive, they're available at drugstores, some colleges and different organizations will give them out. So, if you have them, test them. I was approached by a student from UF. They came to Tallahassee to tell me that he knows people who have used the test strips and found that there was fentanyl. And then, thank goodness, didn't take the drug. So, just imagine if we could save a few lives here in this audience, everybody out there, if they just talked to people about carrying fentanyl strips and just testing anything and just being so careful. Also, we have tools if there is, you know, God forbid, an overdose, and Narcan works really well. We also passed a bill this year to make sure that anyone being treated for a drug overdose in a Florida hospital or a school clinic has to be tested for fentanyl as well as other drugs. And so, there are ways that we can help. And it's just, that's why we need all the education. Broward County is not great in this. We have over 5,000 opioid-related deaths. We are trending better because of awareness. We are trending better because of awareness and steps that, you know, groups are taking, but let's just keep that going. And let's make sure that we are always looking out and letting everyone know. Of course, we have resources that you can use to help if someone has an addiction or if we just want to educate the public on the importance of fentanyl. And so, I thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I encourage you all to please share on whatever medium you have, and let's get the word out and let's prevent some fentanyl deaths from happening. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Senator, very much. Appreciate it. With that, we are going to start by reading the Tuesday Morning Memo. Clark, would you please read that? Thursday Morning Memo. Correct.
Broward County Board of County Commissioners, August 21st, 2025, Thursday Agenda Memorandum. The following are submitted for your consideration. Consent items are 1 through 73. Public hearing items are 74 to 84. Regular items are 85 to 90. I request the following withdrawals and other modifications to the agenda and note the following additional information. Withdrawals, deferrals, substitutions, none. Other modifications. Item 5. The board's consideration of Exhibit 2 to this item is based upon the substitute Exhibit 2 submitted by Public Works Department, distributed as additional material 5A. Items 21 and 22. The board's consideration of Exhibit 1 to each of these items is based upon the substitute Exhibit 1 submitted by the Resilient Environment Department, distributed as additional material 21A and 22A. Item 26. The board's consideration of Exhibit 1 to this item is based upon the substitute Exhibit 1 submitted by the Public Works Department, distributed as additional material 26A. Item 73. Commissioner Hazel P. Rogers requests to be added as a co-sponsor. Item 79. The board's consideration of this item includes consideration of additional material 79A, submitted by the Resilient Environment Department. Item 86. The board's consideration of Exhibit 1 to this item is based upon the updated Exhibit 1 submitted by county administration as additional material 86A. Item 89. Signature pages from City of Coconut Creek, City of Deerfield Beach, and Waste Management have been received. Scrivener's errors. Items 11, 26, and 37. The board's consideration of these items is based upon the items with the corrections shown on the attachment page, on the attached page, Attachment A of Scrivener's Errors. Move to consent. Items 86, 89, and 90 be moved to consent. Time certain, none. Additional material. Items 1G through 1I, board appointments. Item 5A, substitute Exhibit 2 submitted by the Public Works Department. Item 11A, budget resolutions submitted by Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. Item 11B, Scrivener's Errors submitted by the Office of Governmental Affairs. Items 21A and 22A, substitute Exhibit 1 submitted by the Resilient Environment Department. Item 26A, substitute Exhibit 1 submitted by the Public Works Department. Item 72A, substitute Exhibit 3 submitted by the Office of the County Attorney. Item 72B, emails on proposed ordinance language related to calcium score testing submitted by county administration. Item 72C, email on proposed ordinance language related to calcium score testing submitted by Vice Mayor Mark Bogan. Item 86A, calendar update submitted by county administration. Item 89A, Exhibit B to the settlement agreement submitted by Office of the County Attorney. Additional material, public hearing. Item 79A, additional supporting documentation on vacation and abandonment submitted by the Resilient Environment Department.
Oh, the last page is not, we're not done. Okay. Okay, thank you, Stacy. Appreciate that. With that, are there any polls from the consent agenda? I'll start with Commissioner Rogers. None?
Item number 43.
43? Commissioner Udine? Commissioner? Senator Rich? Okay, from the public, we have item 33, is that right?
We have item 9.
9?
And item 43, and we have two people for 33 who just want a comment of support.
Okay, so we have 9, 33, and 43. County Attorney, would you spell it out for us?
Thank you, Mayor. So today's consent agenda consists of items 1 through 73 minus the following items, item 9, item 33, and item 43, and then added to the consent agenda are items 86, 89, and 90.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda.
Miss, if I may, sorry. Mr. Mayor, I believe you had wanted to possibly leave 33 on consent and that the individuals from the public were just here in support and didn't necessarily want it pulled, they wanted to make mention, or you were going to maybe mention, I believe you have their names there.
Okay, they didn't want to speak?
If it was in support, they just wanted to.
Okay. I'm happy to say that if that's what they'd like. This is for both Erin and Paula. Are they here? Okay, so you may just, hold on one second. So you just, I'm happy to say you're in support of this.
Yeah. I would like to speak to it.
Oh.
Okay, okay.
My apologies, I was told that was going to be different.
No problem, okay. Hold on, we'll do that in a second. Okay, we have a motion to approve as stated by the county attorney. We have a second by Commissioner Udine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. With that, we're going to go to item 9, and who is, who picked 9? Is that from the public, right?
Yes, from the public, Chris Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, you're number 9.
Hello, Commissioners. It's good to see you again. I see you've switched chairs again, as is customary. Before I begin, I hope I can give a shout out for the Broward Addiction Recovery Center, the amazing work that they do over there. It's all right, they got their item passed, they're happy. So, I want to look up what that item is. So, I went through the program, I went through Bark for alcohol, and it saved my life. And as we're going through dozing of the Broward government, we're going to do, and we're going to give the government a little bit of Ozempic, I think, here, and cut it down a little bit, that I hope that the people that are doing this and that you guys look at the Broward Addiction Recovery Center as something that is crucial and something that Broward County does really well and should be, should be done in other counties as well, because I don't know if it's being done everywhere. And we're hearing about Senator Polsky talking about the fentanyl. So, want to give a definite shout out to that. Now, to this. As we all know, our new Chief Financial Officer has asked you guys to open the books and is going to do a doge on the county. And I look at things like this because when it comes down to this, we got to understand, we're going to be having property taxes on the ballot in 2026. You know how it is when Governor DeSantis sets his mind to something. It's going to happen, and we could very well see property taxes go away. And I heard Commissioner Geller talk about, well, this will be defunding the police and things like this. Well, in actuality, there are a lot of things that this commission spends money on that are not roads, bridges, police, and things like that. And one of this, one of the things I noticed when I went over the agenda was this ad agency, Spark Branding House, receiving, am I right about this, $87,955,000 for branding? This is, what says total not to exceed amount for term. It's right there. And this is a branding campaign, I think maybe anti-human trafficking, which is important, and a lot of these things are important, but this seems to me like an example of somewhere where we could cut back. Because I know we don't, you pat yourselves on the back when you don't raise the millage rate, but the thing is, is property values continue to go up. So property taxes go up and up and up, and you guys have been in the midst of this massive windfall, and like the governor asked, where is this money going? So we need to know where this money is going. It's time to really tighten our belts and cut back on some of these things because if the public does in fact decide to eliminate property taxes and that revenue doesn't come in, by the way, through sales tax of the tourists who come through here, our tourism set a record again, if you didn't know, will more than pay for the police, the roads, the bridges, the port, things like that. Yes, it will, definitely will. But these pet projects that you guys like to do, those aren't going to make it. So the time to start cooperating with the doge effort is now. Thank you.
Mayor, could we have Mr. Shapiro talk about this item a little bit?
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, Administrator.
Thank you. So this item is in fact paid 100% by the tourist development tax dollars. It is not ad valorem, just to make sure the Commissioners are all aware of that. I think during our briefings, we, a couple of you had asked questions about the item as well, and we confirmed that, just to put that on the record. Secondly, all of that amount is not for the rebranding. It's the larger contract that we have for advertising for the entire county. It's not just the rebranding piece, but it's also everything at airport, seaport, and the CVB for tourism. And as a recommendation from the auditor, this contract used to be handled strictly on a monthly retainer cost. And we, as a recommendation, the auditor suggested that we pull out the reimbursables so there is more transparency. And then that's in fact what we have done. This is the first year that that has happened, and so as a result, I think we underestimated what potentially those reimbursables could be. So that is what is happening here. There is additional $2 million that is put into that entire work effort. And in fact, the dollars were already allocated and appropriated by this body for the body of work of advertising or whatnot. It's just moving it into the actual contract for those reimbursables to be able to align properly with what's happening and with the expenditures. If you all have any other questions, I obviously have President Ritter here from Visit Lauderdale that can speak more directly if there's additional questions.
Okay. We have a couple lined up. Senator Geller?
Thank you.
Then Commissioner Udine, then Commissioner Bogan.
Mr. Nelson, two things. First, I am sincerely happy to see that you are doing better. I know that this is the first step because, you know, it's, it will be a continued journey for you, but you have, I'm being very sincere when I say that I'm glad to see that you're doing better. Having said that, I did want to say the reason I refer to eliminating property taxes, defunding the police, is because eliminating property taxes would defund the police. And the reason I say that is 85% of our general revenue budget comes from property tax. The others are, there's small sales tax, you've got licensing, but 85% is property tax. And according to Attorney General Othmeyer, between 55.7% and 55.8% of our general revenue budget goes directly to BSO. So however you work the numbers, if 85% of our budget is property tax and 55%, between 55.7% and 55.8% of our budget, GR budget, goes directly to BSO, it is impossible, even if we paid nothing to anything else, if we shut every library, shut every park, did everything else, it is impossible not to defund the police if you eliminate property taxes. And those are the numbers, and you're welcome to verify them.
Commissioner Udine?
I'm also glad you're doing well. I know you came to speak once before and you complimented Fort Lauderdale on Bark, and we did reach out, and I mentioned from the dais that it's a Broward County agency, and Broward County was the one that performs that service, and I commend you on doing well. I just have to mention on item number 9, this is not $87 million for branding, this is not $87 million really for anything. Advertising contracts, the way they work in general, have pass-throughs and reimbursables that our county auditor looked at in the past. So you may pay the advertising company X, and part of that is going to the TV station or the radio station or whatnot. So I think we need to be clear when we have this, and we need to be very specific when we vote on this. We're not paying anybody $87 million for this. This is a year-over-year, for a number of years, raising the cap of what we paid over years, and much of this is passed through for the actual costs at the airport, seaport, convention center, when you're bringing these groups in, when we advertise through these things. So yes, it's not ad valorem property tax dollars, but we still do have a duty as being fiscally responsible to make sure that the dollars are spent properly, and this is not really what it's wrapped up in a two-sentence agenda item summary. It's more in-depth than that.
Commissioner Bogan?
Yeah, so I just want to confirm with our Administrator, we're spending $87 million on whether it be commercials or whatever it might be, is that what is being said? We're spending $87 million for some type of advertising?
Yes, but the contract is larger, and I also neglected to say it was also inclusive of transit as well.
I'm sorry, the contract is larger than 87?
No, no, it does more. I didn't say all the things that it does. And maybe, Ms. Ritter, if you would like to come up and clarify some of the other things that are included in the contract.
I'm just curious what the money, what the money is for. That's.
Right. That's right.
And it's not just one year we're talking about, correct? Right.
$10 million of the, the budget for the CVB for marketing and communications is approximately $10 million. That includes a retainer fee, a monthly retainer fee for the agency, plus media buys. The media buys are close to $10 million for a year. That includes things like you talked about, television commercials, digital ads.
Promoting Broward County?
Billboards.
Promoting Fort Lauderdale.
Yes, to the 31 municipalities in Broward County for our number one industry, which is tourism.
So we're really?
But it's not just us.
So you're talking, I don't know, 13, 14 million a year to promote Broward County? Is this around the country?
Around the world.
Around the world, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
Commissioner McKenzie?
So when you first defended this, Monica, you said it's coming out of the tourism pocket. Then as we further inquired, we found other areas where we collectively put the money together to advertise other, like transportation, which is not coming from Stacy's area, but we got a lot of stuff grouped. What's the total amount that we're looking at? I know it's not the 87 million, like.
So, let me do a better job here. So the total contract is that for a five-year period. And so, there are other things that are advertised and done, and it is inclusive. The contract sits with the contract administrator, is under the CVB. She sits as the contract administrator, but other agencies also use that contract for those advertising services. So anything else you'd like to add to that, to make sure I capture it?
Thank you. This, item 9 is TDT money. It's $2 million in reimbursables only. The money is in the CVB's budget. We are simply asking that, right now, the reimbursable cap is $500,000 for the agency. That means that if they hire a videographer, a photographer, if they draft a campaign, which is what we would like to do, that money is passed through from the CVB through Spark to the vendor. It's reimbursable. The Spark pays the vendor, we reimburse. We're capped at $500,000 per year for that. We are, we are in the third year of our current campaign. Quite frankly, we should have done this last year because you need to refresh constantly, new marketing campaigns, new images, new videography, new messaging. We are creating a new message for tourism this year. And the reimbursables aren't enough to do a campaign. It's going to cost more than half a million dollars to hire the production company, the talent, the wardrobe that is required for a campaign that will take us through the next two or three years. So it's strictly a reimbursable. We're just asking to be able to raise the cap on the contract because right now, the reimbursable cap is $500,000, which isn't enough for us to accomplish the goal of a new campaign.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie, I think your question was, his question, I believe, was Commissioner McKenzie, I think your question was, his question, I believe, was, is it all coming from T D T, correct?
The, this agenda item is all coming from T D T.
Right, but then we started talking about other things. So when we're trying to clarify something to the public, as the rest of my colleagues have denoted, it kind of, you know, gets misconstrued what you're trying to bring to us for, as one item. And it seems like we have a bunch of things in one bucket or one wagon, and it can't clearly, you know, allow T D T to do what they want to do, which, as just indicated, it should have been done last year. So now we're digging deeper, but something else, it kind of reminds me, and I'm not, I don't want to rehash this, when we were talking about this float. And I was totally against it, but collectively, I wanted to support my board. And, you know, then later on, you find out there's some things in there that you may not have wanted to go down that road. So I'm just trying to be clear here today, because I stand with my board. Of these other things that are now coming out, that's not what you're talking about, which is what I thought I was supporting today, which is your agenda item. Your money, just the way you explained it, I'm all in. But then we started talking, and more came out of it. That, you got an answer for me?
No, what I think you're saying, what I think is, like, we were criticized, as you know, about supporting that float for the parade.
I didn't want to bring it up.
And so.
Because an 800% ROI isn't good enough for some people?
Whatever, okay. So, so I'm just saying, and so I think it's fair to say, if we're going to be spending a dollar, hey, where's, is that dollar going to TV? Is it going to magazines? Is it going to radio? Is it going to a float? Is it going, just so, I think it prepares us, prepares us so that when the, if criticism comes, we could say, oh yeah, we knew about it, or we didn't, that's why I emailed you or something about some other function. I just want to know, you know, so you could say, hey, we're spending money on advertising our county, this number-one tourism, we're doing this and this. I think that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, and I think also what needs to be shared is that after a certain threshold, you, the process, you have to come here and we have to bless it. So I think if people understand that, it won't be so clouded when, you know, someone asks, you know, why did you?
That's why Jack Silo came here last week, because he was over the threshold.
I understand the process. What I'm saying, when we do not disclose it, like today, we're talking about it. Sometimes we just do it on a, on an agenda item, and it's gone. Later on, it comes back and bites us because no one understands that it's not coming out of our general fund. Because when they talk about it or criticize it, it seems like it's coming from the general fund side. And it's not. So I just want clarity, I want separation, you know, and there's not an issue that I would have with this item, but it's just how it's being perceived, especially today.
Commissioner Fisher, and then?
Yeah, what Mr. Shapiro was talking about too, it's not only C V B. We talked about transportation, and we talked about the port and the airport. It's all inclusive of this, being able to promote those three agencies as well. So I think what Commissioner McKenzie, what I was hearing is like, we hear other items that it covers, and just want to verify that those are three other items that this covers.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Udine.
Thanks, sir.
I just think the summary of the agenda item is confusing because when you have to raise the entire threshold, we use that company for more than one thing throughout the county, and that's the reason why. But I'd like to add, just can you add with the minutes to this meeting, the pamphlet that the governor put out yesterday touting how good we're doing with tourism in the state of Florida? We had a huge record of tourism, and Visit Lauderdale's a big reason why. I know the governor put it out on his Twitter account, and I think we should add that into the minutes on this, to that pamphlet that goes there. Because if you're going to tout tourism, you got to figure out a way to get the tourists here. We met with Mark Gale two days ago, and he told us what the budget looks like. Visit Lauderdale's one of the biggest tourism agencies in the state. And if we're breaking records, we're at least 1/67 of the reason why, but I'm assuming we're much bigger than 1/67.
Yeah, give us more credit.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, what we'll do to make it official part of the record, we'll get a copy of that and distribute it, and it'll be additional material for this item. So it'll be part of the record.
Okay, with that, I'm willing to entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve, a second, Senator Geller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll go to item 33. Authorization to issuance of Housing Finance Authority for Broward County. We have two speakers on this. Reverend Aaron Laver?
Lauer.
Lauer, sorry. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, commissioners. I'll be speaking actually for both myself and Ms. Yucna.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Reverend Aaron Lauer. I am the senior pastor of the United Church of Christ, Fort Lauderdale, and I am a proud member of Bold Justice, an interfaith coalition that is fighting for the people of Broward County. We are facing an affordable housing crisis here in Broward County, as you all know. Over 150,000 households cannot find an affordable housing unit, and there are over 6,000 students in the Broward County School District that are homeless. In our congregations, we've heard the stories of a woman whose rent almost tripled in six years. A woman who is working full-time but is forced to live in the back of a business that she cleans. A family that was born and raised in Broward County and are being forced to move out of Broward because they cannot afford the cost of living. Affordable housing in Broward County is a massive problem, and it deserves a massive solution. We need bold leadership from our county commission for a long-term commitment to funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We are here today and want to thank you, and so glad to hear the news of the Echo Pembroke Park project, a project that will build 150 affordable multifamily units in Pembroke Park. Projects like these are critical to solving our affordable housing crisis and providing a safe place to live for all people in Broward County. But we must do more. We must do more for the people of Broward County, for the people that we serve, for the people in our churches and our mosques and our synagogues, for our children and our grandchildren who will be here long after we are gone. We must do this so that everyone can have access to affordable housing here in Broward. So we have been in contact with many of your offices of the county commissioners. We look forward to meeting with you in the coming weeks, working alongside with you to solve this problem, and taking a bold step in securing long-term commitments to funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund here in Broward. Thank you all.
Thank you, Reverend Lauer, and we appreciate the partnership on many of those. Appreciate it. With that, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Bogan, a second from Senator Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll go to item 43, Senator Geller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I have a constituent here that wants to speak on this item. After he finishes, I'll make some remarks.
Okay. I don't have them.
We have one speaker on this item, David Nielsen.
Okay. Mr. Nielsen, you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen of the audience and others. My name is David Nielsen. I've been a resident of Broadview Park for 33 years. I've been involved in the civic association for 25. This project that they're proposing in our neighborhood is way too big, and your vote here today is going to kind of start the process of them building on this 39 acres of this beautiful, beautiful piece of property. It's a shame Broward County didn't buy this property a long time ago and make it into one of your green spaces. Anyways, with the study that was done by the planning agency says that it is not compatible with our neighborhood and that there are inconsistencies in the zoning, because they have to up the zoning. It also is saying that the historical natural resources that are there, it is an area of particular concern because it's just a natural nature preserve. So the 8,000 residents that live in Broadview Park are saying, please, please do not give them their transmittal, the amendment, the consent to move forward with this project. Your vote here today is really going to change our neighborhood. Also, I have a couple of questions, and I probably you're not going to answer me. Number one, I'm sure you people have all seen the pictures of this property on a piece of paper. Number two, has anybody here driven past this project? Has anybody driven around this 39 acres? Have any of you stepped foot on this piece of property to take a look for yourselves for exactly what you're going to vote here today? I know you don't have to answer. This project, I understand that we need housing, but it's way too big. If they can downsize it, I don't see any problems, but, you know, 560 homes, 600 homes in our small neighborhood, it's only one square mile. Anyways, I just hope that Broward County can help the residents of Broadview Park. We are the largest unincorporated area that you guys govern. I certainly hope that my presence here today and my testimony does not fall on blind eyes and deaf ears, because I have been before many commissions over these years, and sometime that happens. Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak here today.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
With that, we'll go to Senator Geller.
Thank you, and sir, I appreciate your being here today. As you know, I have spoken on this item many, many times in Broadview Park. And although I honestly, I have not set, physically set foot on the property, because I haven't gotten out of my car, I've driven around it many times. The, I, I have been representing Broadview Park, although I represented in the Senate from 1998 to 2008. I've only been representing it as a commissioner since 2022 reapportionment. There originally was a 900-unit, five-story building proposed on that site, and the prior commissioner had agreed with that when I looked at. I agreed with you, I said that was absolutely too big, and it would have been completely out of character, a five-story building. I turned down that and have met with the proposed developers. The land is owned by the Fort Lauderdale Housing Authority, and they have come to us with repeated proposals. And the one that I finally said this is a reasonable proposal was for, I don't have the exact number, somewhere around 480 units in that ballpark. It could be 490, could be 470, but right around 480. They've reduced the height from five stories to three stories, and the neighborhood is mostly one- and two-story buildings, although I think you may have a few that are three, but those are just rebuilds, but almost exclusively one- and two-story buildings. And I said, again, five-story was out of character. I would have preferred, and I've said repeatedly, that there be more affordable single-family four-purchase homes, because I do believe that it is important, that is a way to build generational wealth. And they have agreed that separating the apartments from the, from the majority of the area, Broadview Park is one half that's primarily owner-occupied, and the other side is primarily rental, though there are owner-occupied in the rental side, and there's rental and the owner-occupied. But generally, one side is more owner-occupied, the other side is rental. And they have agreed to build single-family homes on the, basically as a screen between the single-family home area and the rental apartment that they're building. We are still working to see whether or not those can be made into affordable for homeownership. Again, that depends on the financing from the City of Fort Lauderdale Housing Authority and, as well as Broward County, because again, the property is owned by the City of Fort Lauderdale Housing Authority. But I've made plain my request, and they've told me they will try and exceed, depends on the financing, if that be sold as affordable, the single-family homes, because again, I do think that's a way of building generational wealth. I, this is the first, there are a number of issues. Today is, I believe, the first of four times that this will have to come in front of us, because we will be doing both the land use and the zoning, because it's unincorporated. So this is the first step of the process. I am able to vote for this today because, although it says that the land use change will permit up to, I believe it's 652 homes, somewhere around that number, I have been assured by the landowner, which is, as I said, City of Fort Lauderdale, the developer, that they will either be doing a restrictive covenant on the property or the site plan, something that will restrict it to the approximately 480, give or take, could be 490, could be 470, I don't have the numbers, units. I will not be able to vote on, or recommend to this commission final approval at the 600-plus units that is before us today, but today is only the first of four votes. And in reference to the issues about natural resources and archaeological, after we pass this, you know, the county will do, be doing its due diligence on those areas to make sure that there isn't the archaeological or natural resources problems. I know that nobody wants development. Everybody wants affordable housing, and nobody wants development. And I've done my very level best to affirmatively and effectively represent Broadview Park. However, we know that approximately 14,000 people a year over the last five years and or over the last 25 years are moving to Broward County. We know that the average household size is 2.1 people per house, meaning we need approximately 7,000 housing units a year just to keep up with population growth. I cannot, in good conscience, you know, be sitting here saying we need more density if we're going to reduce the cost of housing and say, except in my district. So respectfully, I think I have done a good job at protecting the interests of Broadview Park, but I can't leave that area undeveloped. And the density that we're looking at there is, I want to say, 18, 16, 16 units an acre. It's not a very dense development, and this is the best reasonable compromise that we can come up with.
I see the people that are involved in this are in the audience, but I believe that the, that the number that I last heard was 485 multifamily units. So I guess want to clarify that, plus 34 single-family homes, divided by landscaping, lake, so forth. Actually, I think they've done a really good job of trying to bring this down appropriate for the neighborhood, but also recognizing what the reverend said before. We have a crisis. We know it, and we'd have to keep building and doing things about it. We're a built-out community, it's very difficult. So I think this kind of hits on the mark here, so I'm going to support this.
Anyone else? I'll just say, I have, I have some concerns on this with regard to, there's competing agendas we have here. One is affordable housing, the other is maintaining open space for drainage, for the foreseeable future. My feeling is almost we have to preserve almost every bit of green space we've got, particularly in neighborhoods like that, where you've got, where, when you have sea level rise, we have to have someplace for that water to go. I am glad that they are preserving 22 acres here, out of, I forgot how many, is it, how many acres total?
39.
Okay, and I'm glad to see that. I'm going to continue to take a look at this as it goes through transmittal. I would like to ask our own Resiliency Department to take a look at that, because I actually want to see the ground modeling, the ground level. I think that's important. Neighborhoods like this, older neighborhoods like this, need to make sure that they will be able to survive a high sea level rise. So I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure of that. With that, I will take a motion.
Motioned.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the project in my district.
We have a motion to approve from Senator Geller, second from Senator Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We will see that one a number of times, three more times. And like I said, there's a few things I definitely want to be looking at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just 10 words or less, on the issue that you talked about, the hydrology, there will be a large lake in the middle. But beyond that, in order to make this work, they need to connect it to one of our major canals, which they're right off of 84, so they are able to connect it. And I've already been over that with staff. Once they do that, that should, assuming, of course, we always have the problem with the canals. But, you know, once they're connected to the major canal, that will resolve the flooding issue.
Those kind of things, we have to be looking at.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I have 10 more seconds?
No, I'm sorry, we've already, you're going to have three more times. And what I would suggest is email us and so that we, and go into length. We will look at that, and I'm happy to look at it as well. Okay?
Okay, let's go.
With that, we are going to public hearing.
The public hearing on item 74 is now open. Item 74 is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades Marine Terminal Security Services franchise to Dothan Security, Inc., DBA, DSI Security Services for a new five-year term. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, we have item 74 on the table. Do I have a motion? We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? This is 74.
Thank you. Sorry.
I'll give, I was, was I rushing everybody a little bit?
Yeah, that's okay. It's okay.
Okay, we have a motion, I'm sorry, who had a second? We have a second from Commissioner Fisher. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 75, please.
The public hearing on item 75 is now open. This is the first of two required public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on September 4th, 2025. No action on the motion is required at this time. Item 75 is a motion to approve second amendment to the Marine Terminal Lease and Operating Agreement between Broward County and King Ocean Services Limited, Cayman Islands Incorporated, retroactive to March 31st, 2025, to acknowledge the exercise of both option terms, set rent rates, and the annual minimum guaranteed payment, revise the final premises leasehold boundaries, and update the various other provisions. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
Okay, we will not be voting on this one because it will come up again, but we will take any discussion? Any discussion?
No.
Okay, with that, we'll go to 76.
The public hearing on item 76 is now open. This is the second of two required public hearings. The first public hearing was held on June 10th, 2025. Item 76 is a motion to approve second amendment to the lease agreement between Broward County and C-Mex Construction Materials Florida LLC for a 4.61-acre marine terminal in the North Port area of Port Everglades, setting the applicable rates for the second five-year option term with a term of April 1, 2025 through March 31, 2030. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
And this is our second?
This is our second time hearing this, so we will be voting on this.
Move it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fisher, a second by Commissioner Bogan. Our county attorney is asking us to speak up a little louder on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
How was that? Any opposed? Okay, very good. With that, we will go to item 77.
The public hearing on item 77 is now open. Item 77 is a motion to adopt resolution to transmit to designated state review agencies a proposed amendment to the County Land Use Plan Natural Resource Map Series, PCNRM 24-3, to update the environmentally sensitive lands map within the city of Dania Beach. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Move it.
We have a motion to, and a second. Motion by Commissioner Bogan, second by Senator Geller. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Go to 78, please.
The public hearing on item 78 is now open. Item 78 is a motion to adopt resolution amending Article III of the Administrative Rules Document Broward Next regarding redevelopment units. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
I just want to call this the resolution for the Nan Trust, I mean Nan Rich Realized Resolution because she brought this forward to us. We got it through the Planning Council, now it's here, so Senator, thank you.
Senator Rich, do you want to, any comment on this?
Yeah, I just, yes, I want to move it, but I just want to thank Commissioner Fur for being on the Planning Council. And taking my place. Thank you.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Senator Rich, second by Commissioner Bogan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 79.
The public hearing on item 79 is now open. Item 79 is a motion to adopt resolution to vacate, annul, and abandon a 30-foot-wide right-of-way easement lying within lots 1 through 12 of the Causeon and Bracknell addition to Deerfield, recorded in plat book six, page nine of the official records of Palm Beach County, and to release other specified interests within the same plat as recorded in the official records of Broward County. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Move it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bogan, second by Senator Geller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 80.
The public hearing on item 80 is now open. Item 80 is a motion to adopt resolution to release a 75-foot-wide stormwater storage drainage easement recorded in book 16653, page 671, and a portion of the 15-foot-wide drainage easement recorded in 16653, page 664, and lying within parcel A of Andrews Premier Business Park Plat, plat book 183, page 1 through 2, within the city of Pompano Beach. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
We have a motion by Senator Geller, a second by Commissioner Bogan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, we got to speak up.
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 81. I'm trying, Drew.
The public hearing on item 81 is now open. Item 81 is a motion to adopt resolution pertaining to technical amendments, amending or repealing various sections of the County Administrative Code. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Move it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bogan, second by Senator Geller.
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You guys are good. You guys are good. Any opposed? That passes very unanimously. We'll go to item 82.
The public hearing on item 82 is now open. Item 82 has two parts. The board will consider both parts at the same time, but vote upon the parts separately. Part A is a motion to waive section 18.5.1 of the County Administrative Code, which requires that the board first direct the county attorney's office to draft a proposed ordinance. Part B is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to the technical amendments to the County Code of Ordinance, amending sections 1 through 233, 1 through 485, 16 and 1/2 dash 21, 26 dash 85, and 26 dash 90, and repealing Article 34 of Chapter 1, including sections 1 dash 571 through 1 dash 576. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
County attorney, we do this A and B separately?
Yes, sir.
So I'll entertain a motion on 82A. Thank you. Senator, we'll start with A. Senator Geller has made a motion for 82A in favor, seconded by Commissioner Bogan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. While entertain a motion on 82B.
Move approval.
Same as last, Senator Geller has made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Bogan. All those in favor?
Aye.
You guys are slowing down here.
We got a correction. He has to be vice mayor, not commissioner.
Oh, that's right, I do need to say, I should have been saying that all day. Sorry about that. Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, I know. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's better. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 83.
The public hearing on item 83 is now open. Item 83 is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to dangerous dogs and confining of animals, amending section 4 dash 2, 4 dash 6, 4 dash 12, and 4 dash 19 of the County Code of Ordinances, requiring, among other things, that owners confine certain dogs in a proper enclosure and that dangerous dog owners obtain liability insurance, revising civil penalties and violations. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
We're not going to, we're, do you want to do this to dangerous dogs? How horrible.
But how do we, how do we?
Keep them on a leash.
How do we enforce this or, I mean, what is this?
County attorney, you want to explain this?
This is really to maintain compliance with state law. It's updates that we believe are legally required and we have code enforcement.
Yeah, but it's legally required, but how do we enforce this? I mean, we can't get folks to even come out when there's a dog running around a neighborhood. But now we're going to say that the dangerous dog has to have this insurance coverage. I'm just saying.
County minister.
So I was just going to, I was going to ask Mr. Vialpondro to come.
Help us out here, Lenny.
Mr. Mayor.
As Drew shared, though, it is exactly just to align with state law, but please.
And I don't want to take it lightly because just yesterday, there were some kids mauled.
Yes, in their own house.
Up in the southern part of the county. But, I mean, what happens? Those dogs were visiting one day at this house. They were there visiting. So I don't, if we're going to do something, I want to do something where we can impact, you know, outcomes or kids won't be put in these type of situations. I mean, because these dogs historically are the same dogs that are attacking people.
Let's hear from Lenny.
Right, so mayor, members of the board, thank you. Basically, we do, when those types of incidents happen, respond. And we take down all the information about that dog. And if it meets the criteria, you know, they have due process. But once that process is over, then the dog is declared dangerous. And there's a special licensing process for that dog, you know, in lieu of being put down, if you will. And during that process is when they would comply with these criteria. So there is a code enforcement process, a hearing process.
And Mr. Mayor, just, okay, to make a motion. And as I keep telling the governor, and I don't know why they keep threatening us, but as I keep telling the governor, we follow the law in Broward, so I move approval.
Okay. We have a motion from Senator Geller, a second by Commissioner Udine. Did you want to?
I just wanted to ask our county attorney, can we make, is there anything we could add to this to make the owners of dogs, that, an owner of a dog that injures somebody, is there anything we could do to increase liability? Obviously, there's liability. You can always sue somebody for that. But is there something we can add that, you know, that might help, you know, victims?
Yeah. Vice mayor, this obviously, yeah, this obviously helps somewhat because the people will have more financial consequences. But the answer to your question is this area is fraught. We've litigated a lot here. And so what I'd like to do is, we also have Deanne Jackson here. I don't know if she wants to speak to it, but this is probably something that we're better off studying and then we could always bring back potential.
I don't need an answer.
Okay, I.
No, but right now, if you get bit, you have no recourse.
You can always file.
It's limited.
You can file an action.
Yeah, you can say, yes, you do, but it's limited based on what coverage those owners have or don't have. That's how it goes down.
Even if they don't have insurance, you can still take action again.
You take action, but where does that go? If you lawyers are up here now, we take it on pro bono?
Well, I think what we want to do is just, this could go all over the place.
No, but it's a good conversation. I think we just need to drill down in this area because it's, again, historically, it's the same dangerous dogs we're talking about. It's irresponsible owners. We're all saying the same thing. We may joke a little differently, but when are we going to really drill down to make those owners responsible? Is all that we all are trying to say.
Today, we're just aligning with state law. That's all we're doing today.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. I don't know when a dog is going to bite me or not, whether or not I'm going to be mauled by a dog, especially when they're on a, not on their leash. You tell me, how does that help us? Because I can take a picture of that dog strolling along by himself, no leash, nothing. Tell me how, what we're trying to do here helps that situation. I have my camera, I can take a picture. Can Drew use those pictures from my personal camera? Tell me what, how are you helping me? I don't love dogs. I don't have one. I don't believe I need to stand and watch him walk all the way down the road before I can call someone. And whom do I call? The SO 911? This is crazy. So tell me, I just wanted to say something. I'm afraid of dogs and they're just strolling up and down the road, no leash. Tell me how does this help us?
Cats are the problem.
Iguanas, iguanas.
I don't have an answer for you. I don't think anybody has an answer for you. Right now, let's just pass this one. Okay, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Do you want to hear the, okay.
Cut that short. Because that could go anywhere.
I could be in compliance with.
That would be.
And that's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, that would be a law without a leash, is what that would be.
Thank you.
A law without a leash. Okay, item 84.
No cats.
Uh-oh.
Just joking.
Item 84, Stacy, last one. Thank you.
Our final public hearing item is item 84. The public hearing on item 84 is now open. Item 84 is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to impact credit fees and development permits and orders, amending sections 5 dash 81, 5 dash 82.13, and 39 dash 43 of the County Code of Ordinances.
413.
Sorry.
You've been doing such a great job.
No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
All right, sorry, just want to make sure. We have a motion from Commissioner Dean and second, oh, and second from Vice Mayor, no, I'm sorry. Motion from Senator Geller, second from Vice Mayor Bogan. I got to write that down. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have one aye. There we go, there we go. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we are, I think that completes everything on the agenda. Am I right?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five, that's one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you're, no, you're right, eighty-five. Yeah, okay, so eighty-five.
Item 85 is a motion to award open-end contract to most reasonable source Schindler Elevator Corporation for elevator escalator and moving walkway maintenance and repair services for the aviation department.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Bogan, second from Commissioner Udine. All those in favor?
Aye.
The last aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, now, we're finished with all the, with the agenda. With that, we will go to off-agenda. And we'll start with Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of us, of course, were busy over the break and I was able to attend a few events. The PEA luncheon went well. I want to commend Commissioner Rogers for the free trade zone push that she made and the presentation that was given by staff to educate folks about the free trade zones throughout the county and how they can be part of it. We had a lot of members from the board there and we probably could have had a quorum, but everybody knows how to conduct themselves when we are in the same place at the same time, which occurs pretty frequently. I also was able to attend the Hollywood Power Lunch from Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. A lot of business leaders were there. We had a presentation from Broward Health. And also attended the Merrimack Pembroke Parks Regional Chamber Eggs and Issues Legislative Breakfast, myself and the mayor was there, and that was a well-attended event as well. We both spoke at that event and was well-received just about things that had already been voted on. North Perry Airport, the town hall meeting takes place August 27th. takes place August 27. We have currently to date over 251 people who have RSVP'd. And so we are looking forward to have good conversation on the North Perry Airport and safety initiatives, which we also want the public to give us their thoughts as well, and other elected leaders who will be there. And then finally, a note of personal privilege here, where the city of Miramar is recognizing my efforts over the years, whether I had a title or not, in improving the lives of folks in the city of Miramar. And so they have a renaming ceremony to rename the Miramar Multi-Service Complex to the Alexandra P. Davis Multi-Service Complex. And that will take place 10:00 AM, August 28, 6700 Miramar Parkway. Thank you.
Congratulations. Commissioner McKenzie.
I just want to ask a question.
Okay.
Commissioner Davis, I appreciate your efforts with the North Perry Airport. I'm just curious as to when you're doing this, can they do like a comparison, like FXE? I mean, I don't see the number of incidents there. I mean, what, what is it about North Perry that we have these frequent occurrences of aircraft falling in neighborhoods? So.
Yeah, I don't know if Monica wants to address it or the director. I have some thoughts, but they're probably best to direct.
Okay. I look forward to that, and thank you. During our budget hearings a couple meetings ago, I think we all expressed the interest to start a little earlier, in particular, I think we were talking about the sheriff's budget at the time, you know, starting those processes earlier. I just want to make sure that we're gonna go down that path. I brought it up again, so that it's just not at a conference meeting where we can't vote, but to empower or to make sure we direct the manager to, the administrator to start these processes early. We get them late, and then we have like, you know, a couple of comments to make. And I'm sure we all have more to do. I think a lot of the problems that we do deal with in the room can probably worked out along the way. So just want to remind us of what we agreed to, in particular you, Mayor. So that's it. And glad to be back, and I won't bore you with my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner McKenzie. Commissioner Fisher.
First of all, congratulations, Commissioner Davis. Well deserved. Just a couple of kudos. Number one, that I do share Waltham Manners with Commissioner McKenzie, I believe. And but the city manager there.
That's the big, beautiful sheriff.
That's right. That's right. City Manager Lee Ann Henderson there, from the city of Waltham Manners, recently named the Florida City and County Managers Association as the recipient of his 2025 Professional Management Excellence Award. So she's really just a tremendous asset. Of course, we lost Jeremy there, as Ms. Shapiro knows, who's doing a great job there at Waltham Manners, too. So kudos to him, but city manager, well done. The second thing is, I just want to compliment to, Christmas in July has been a huge program through Kiwanis, which I've been in Kiwanis for many, many years. And I'll thank Ms. Shapiro for working with the Panthers and having the Ameren Bank an opportunity to provide necessities for these families and these children in July. And this is a great event every year. And but it was interesting, when I was there, one of our Broward County Transit employees, Matt Jack Kay, was dressed up in a character as Jack Sparrow in his, in his, in his time. And he is like, looks like the real deal, I'm telling you right now. But I had a chance to talk with him, and he donates his time to organizations like this. So just one of our other employees just out there doing their, their wonderful things and deeds to the, to the community. Then lastly, as Senator Geller does every now and then, we, I do a District Four quarterly meetings with all my mayors. And I try to bring forth someone from here, when our agency's here, to share what they do. And yesterday, I had one with Norm Foster, and we actually got him to smile, by the way, which was, which was a huge accomplishment. And Marty Cassini, they tag teamed together in their governmental affairs, and I just want to thank them publicly, too, because it was so informational, and the mayors really interacted on the subject that they really talked about budgeting and legislation and so forth. So again, Mr. Shapiro, great job on your, on your team members. So that's it. Thank you.
Senator Rich.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I wanted to mention, number one, that I'm honored to be participating, and I know the mayor will also be there. At Southwest Regional Library is celebrating their 25th anniversary out in Penbrook Pines on Saturday. It's very exciting. It's such a fabulous library. They've been so helpful in so many things. They had our eviction prevention program there with all people coming to, you know, sign up for things. And they're, they're, they're really such a community asset. So they're going to be having this event, and I'm very excited. And also, just to say that I am, you know, so proud of the fact that our libraries recognize the importance of academic freedom and not banning books, and from the very beginning. And so it's wonderful to be participating in that. Also, would like to just mention, I wanted to thank Lenny, if he's still here. Yes, I see him. And some of our county attorneys also have been involved in this, but I want you to know that finally, after, I don't know how many years already this has been, but the city of Weston has passed its first public hearing on the amendment to their tree preservation ordinance, which is extremely draconian and needs to be changed. And they're working on it. But thank you so much for all the help. We wouldn't have been able to, to finally get there without you. And I just want to also mention that I had mentioned before, the coordinating council of Broward, which is, are the, all the larger human service organizations in the county. We meet monthly, but we have been having these recent housing Broward webinars, and they've been very successful. Last time, we had a very large group from across the county to learn about affordable housing issues. And the next one will be, you get this, the Buzz, it's called. All of you are getting that now. It'll be in there, the link and everything to it. It's going to be October 8 is the next one, but they've been really very successful. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Bogan.
You know, I had an item on here. I've been fighting for affordable housing. Finally, I hope Commissioner Rich will finally support me on that. No, I'll be serious. I had a health item on year 72. It came last year. And I think Mr. Udine made some good comments about, like, what do the hospitals feel about this? And we went out to Shane Strom. There's backup. I just want to make sure everybody knows Shane agrees with it, has no problem with, went to Cleveland Clinic, which is even more of a heart hospital. They agree with it. I went, got an expert in the industry based out on the East Coast, Dr. Min, who just supplied a letter of support. So it's something that people need to know about, just so you know, when they go get a test, if they don't get the, this whole heart project, if they don't get the contrast, it doesn't show the most important plaque. It's the soft plaque, which can kill you. The hard plaque is also bad, but the soft plaque is the worst plaque to have. And so it's just an education. And if there's anybody that says, I need more, let me know, I'll get more. But, you know, I know there's more hearings on this, but I'm trying to go by what you guys asked for to satisfy you. So please let me know if there's any more that you, make you comfortable. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Commissioner Udine.
Thank you. I just want to make mention, I want to thank the mayor for how he handled the, the public face of this DOGE inquiry that came. And I have to tell you, I'm in full agreement that they should be, that all government should always be looking at all the spending that we do. And I think the mayor took the right tack on this. I think it's, I, I wel, as a commissioner, I welcome it. I think they should do it all the time. I think they should do it in all the different cities and counties. And they should see if there are spots where there's dollar, tax dollars that are being wasted. I think that they should bring that to the attention of whoever's doing it, so that there can be corrections made. And I know that our auditor and our team stand by that, and we do that all the time. And I think that it's an important thing to do. And, and I think that people should recognize that there are different policy positions, but if there's blatant fraud, waste, or abuse, that should be pointed out, and that should be brought to everybody's attention. So I, I think that you handled it well in your public comments for that, by, by making it more of, less combative and more, come on in and let's see what we have to do. And I'm, I'm actually anxious to see the report. I know our staff has brought us things in the past where we could save dollars and where we could bring, you know, efficiencies there. And I, I think that's important. I also, I have this written down, so I want to get my, make sure I have my facts right here. I want to also give a shout out to Kimberly Moreau and her new Broward Connect podcast series. I don't know if you've started listening to any of these podcasts, but they're really good. This, it takes place in the beautiful downtown Room 407 Studios, where you can go podcast. September is Emergency Hurricane Preparedness Month. So September's podcast is about our Emergency Operations Center hurricane preparedness and what our AOC does. I know that they have Clay on that podcast, maybe Tracy, and maybe a guest appearance from moi, because I podcast with her about that on the, on the Broward Connect podcast. You can find that, where you find all your podcasts, on Spotify, on podcasts, probably on Twitter, LinkedIn, Instagram. Check her out, @BrowardInfo, Kimberly Moreau will get that information to you. You could push that out to your constituents. It's really good, and you should participate in it and have some fun with it, because people are getting their news from these podcasts and from a lot of this different.
What is the podcast called now?
It's called Broward Connect.
Broward Connect, okay.
Right? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, and we've got some information we're going to send out. So I'll talk about it a little bit when I get to my, too. Thank you.
Maybe you could throw a few bucks behind that, too, so we could really promote it. Maybe we could do a little video stuff, and it doesn't have to just be, you know, good stuff. I mean, the studio is phenomenal. It's a desk and two headphones, but other than that, it's fantastic. But no, no, seriously, it's very well done, and I think our constituent, great job, Kimberly. I think our constituents are going to have fun with it.
Spotify.
Oh, that's Instagram, Twitter, MySpace, wherever you want.
Anything else? That's good.
That's it.
Okay. Senator Geller.
Thank you. Number of items. First of all, Commissioner Bogan, I was planning on commenting on your item. I didn't, hadn't noticed that it had been moved to consent in terms of, I was one of the people that had raised concerns the last time, because I'm not a doctor. And I wanted to compliment you on resolving a lot of the concerns I had by showing me the hospitals, and particularly the third letter, which was, I think, unsupplemental from the noted physician, who's a cardiac surgeon, who says, yeah, I, I agree with you. So I wanted, I was not able to vote for it the first time because you didn't have this backup. And I just think you want to compliment you. You did a good job in that. Secondly, and this, unless there are six votes in opposition, I will be asking the county attorney to draft an item. And we have been discussing medical transport, and one item that I will be adding that I believe is completely non-controversial, is the county attorney to draft. And I think it's completely non-controversial, because it's extremely limited, is that in the event that someone arrives at an airport by air ambulance, which is a term of art, they're not just flying in, but if they arrive by air ambulance, that we establish a new category. We had done something like that for Cleveland Clinic, but I don't think they ever actually took advantage. But that if they arrive by air ambulance, they can be transported by private ambulance to whatever hospital they want, because if it's 911, they generally have to go to the closest hospital. And the way it was represented to me is if they are coming in on air ambulance, you don't want them waiting for an hour or two for an ambulance to show up. You want the ambulance waiting there, the private company. So I am asking the county attorney to draft something that, under the very limited circumstances, that a company, that someone arrives via air ambulance, that, that ambulance company can arrange to have a private ambulance, transport them from the air ambulance to whatever local hospital they're flying in to go to. And that's only one way. They can't be going back on private company, you know, other than under, through our normal procedure, because those are not as life or death when they're going from the, the hospital. So if there's not six votes in objection, I'm asking the county attorney to draft that. Next item. Yes?
Well, before we go, before we go all in, well, okay. I don't want to go into a full discussion. Okay.
I'm curious, what happens now, when, when someone comes in?
My understanding is if they come in right now, then they have to wait for an ambulance to arrive, or they can dial 911 and hopefully gets there soon. But they want the air, the ambulance to be waiting there. Okay. Now, I want to remind the commissioners and senior staff about the Anne Frank exhibit at the Holocaust Center, which is next Wednesday. I would also like to, if everybody I know has received a memo, South Florida Regional Planning Council is having a, a meeting on September 11. It's an all-day conference. And this is on the subject of transit-oriented development. Again, we need more housing to bring housing prices down. And so this one is specifically related to transit-oriented development, because that's the place where we can get the best density bang for the buck. I would, at the budget hearing on Tuesday, I had asked the county administrator about negotiations with the sheriff. I assume that there's no new update. I just want to remind everybody, and I assume someone is letting the sheriff know, I will not be supporting anything if I get something on Wednesday, the day before the, our budget hearing on September 4th? If I get something on September 3 and don't have a chance to discuss this with county administration, you know, I don't see how any of us are going to be able to support anything, which is why I think our actual deadline is a week from tomorrow, because, and that's the kind of a drop dead deadline, because I just don't see any way that after that, the county administrator, and even that may be too late, whatever, if there is any negotiation with the sheriff, or if there is any proposal, it has to come in time for us to review this, negotiate this, speak with the county administrator. And I think we're out of time already, but, you know, maybe, I'm sure we can still get something Monday, but we're basically out of time on this. And as far as I understand, there has been no counter or substantive discussion. I know there've been a lot of discussions between Mr. Ruiz and the, the undersheriff, Colonel Urena. Okay, Colonel Urena. But nothing, that has been something that will lead to resolution. So just warning, we're running out of time. And then the last thing, there've been some discussions on DOGE, and I made a remark earlier. Ignoring the substance of DOGE, I just want, and I don't understand why, both the governor and the chief financial officer began by threatening us with the severe consequences if we didn't comply, when, as far as I know, at all points in time, we indicated, of course, you give us these issues, of course, we will do what we are required to do. I want to remind everybody what I said when I voted to repeal fluoride, when I taken, two weeks before that, a statewide podcast in opposition to repealing fluoride, to a statewide mandate on that. But the legislature passed it, and we did it. And Broward County, I am not aware of any cases where we have told the governor, the chief financial officer, the legislature, up yours, we don't care what you say, we're not doing it, at all points in time. As far as I know, we've always said, the law is the law, whatever it is, we'll follow it. So I don't understand why they began by threatening us with consequences if we didn't follow the law. the law, when we've always said we're prepared. Just ask us nicely next time, please. But one way or another, ask us nicely your threat must, we're still going to follow the law.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I'm going to be brief because one thing I have not learned yet, whenever we are on break, we are supposed to be on break. So I worked my entire break, all right? It just did not stop. So, and the more you connect with your communities, the more you learn what their challenges are and we're not assuming that we have all the answers. So going through that process and visiting homeowners association, you know, family gatherings in the neighborhood, if you see extra cars in the neighborhood, you know, something is wrong or something good, some good food is around, anything to open the door so we can have conversation and to let them know you have access to your government. I have a strong immigrant population, so I do a little bit extra to educate them as I go along. All right? So I'm good. I'm ready for our next budget conversation. Okay? So I want to see, make sure I see some of the things I, my district deemed important. And as we were talking about marketing and promotions, then I'm remembering 31st Avenue, that garbage, that, Mackenzie?
What?
That, yes, stop talking to my girlfriend. Okay. Can you just listen? I'm on 31st Avenue, which is in your district. 31st Avenue in your district, that proposed lot that is going to be that movie production studio. And when I was listening to the conversation with Stacy explaining all the things that they do in marketing and from talking to that company, I think they are an awesome asset and we should not wait to include them if there's a committee we see that they can serve on. That's where I'm going. Let's try and get some of that talent and those resources. Now, I had that conversation with them earlier about cities, what they can do with neighboring cities, you know, and they have some good ideas as to website update and connectivity and all that good stuff. So I'm just saying to the county, let's have a conversation with that company to see how we can utilize their talents right now. Okay, let me see. And we have friends, Dennis Millian and Millich, that can help us to get there. Let's, I don't know about you, I'm curious as to where we are with Brightline and investments and the commitment and what we're looking forward, going forward. I think we need to have that discussion. We were all excited about Broward Health and Memorial. I'm also curious as to where that is. Those things do impact our broader community, so we need to have those kind of discussions. And I would like to hear from our Parks Department because I think their parks are being used more than before. People are engaged, lots of events. I need to, I don't know if it's reflected in the budget. I'm speaking to the Parks Director Monica directly right now. I really, we really need to know what's happening in our park to see if there's increased activities and how are we going to be able to manage and continue to keep the gates reasonable and reasonably open. Okay? Don't want to hear too much about that because we need to socialize to keep our mental health. There's ways that we do that. So that's where I'm at right now and looking forward to other discussions as we move forward. Thank you. And to my colleague, congratulations personally, well deserved. And you're setting the tone for somebody calling me now, so I don't know, y'all behaving badly out there. Okay, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. A couple of things. This was an interesting summer, particularly when I, there wasn't time for too much vacation, but the one that I, the one time I actually got a chance to go out and was literally kayaking down the Juniper Springs in Ocala, I get the call about DOGE and had to go find somewhere to do the thing for this week on Friday, find some hotel that I could do, some meeting room in. It is nuts.
Doing a tech?
No, no, I was camping out. I was camping out. So, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't get the wifi, couldn't do it.
You got it from the kayak?
I should have done it from the kayak. I think that would have been better.
That would be great.
I know, I know. I had planned on doing it. I had planned on, but I couldn't get the signal. But I do want to comment, the professionalism that our own county administrator and team presented. I think we had a very good story to tell from the get-go. I have, as Commissioner Udine mentioned, you know, I don't have any problem with anybody taking a good look. The fact that we have an independent auditor all the time, Bob, I think you being here all the time, having been, had a chance to look over everything, made a hu, makes a huge difference. I think the policies that this commission has done on procurements, on independent redistricting, all of those things. And then to, when I started looking and I think we were presenting our own, like our own bond rating compared to all the counties in the United States, out of 3,725 counties in the United States, only 47 have our bond rating, triple bond rating, best you can get. That's, you know, and then to be, you know, for someone to think we're not handling money well, I'm like, you may want to take a good look at this. I mean, especially when there's no debt, there's, our reserves look good, we've attended all our infrastructure. You know, it is a good story. And so I looked at it as an opportunity to brag because I thought, you know, let's do it. And if there is something that we need to take a good look at, this is a commission that is willing to take a good look at it. And I think, you know, I think that's been our, our practice. So it's been interesting hearing from other mayors that are in the same process. They're, they're calling us, asking, what happened? What do you do? And I'd say, show your best, show your best stuff, you know? And hopefully we'll hear from them, who knows when. But the fact is, we swamped them with 50,000 documents. And if we're swamping them and every other county is swamping them, I don't know how they're going to get through all this stuff. That's a, that's an enormous amount of documents. I mean, who knows how it's going to work? But anyway, I also had a chance to go to the Emergency Operations Drill. And if you guys ever get a chance to go, it's new, Clay has done, Pacheco has done a fantastic job. I went there, they had simulated, they had simulated a hurricane, simulated newscast, and everybody was in all these, in all these teams, from the cities to the logistics to, you know, everybody. Everybody was getting all these questions on a very granular level that as teams, they had to figure it out. They were all, it was just, it was the best drill I've seen since I've been here, by far, by far. So, you know, I think not only should we take comfort in that, all the cities should be taking comfort in that, he's doing a great job. I was just incredibly impressed. I was glad to see yesterday, the, both the Southeast Florida Climate Change Compact, Monroe County, as you probably had read in the news, was considering going out of it. They have rejoined, as well as with the SFRPC, they were considering, they must be having some real tough budget problems. They were going to be dropping out. They also stayed in that, so I think that's good news for all of us. I think we're much better together. Today, we saw the release of the, or the final draft of the solid, of the Waste Master Plan, not that, the settlement with the Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach. I just wanted to tell you, your team did fantastic. I think you put like seven attorneys on there, something like that. Kevin, unbelievable negotiating skills on this. We will not be meeting on August 28th. Release that date for you, if you didn't realize that. They have all passed it. Coconut Creek passed it unanimously. Deerfield almost did, four to one. But, you know, what's, that is something that is going to be beneficial for this county for decades, for decades. Not, and the quicker, I've already signed it, so tell Waste Management they can start sending the money now on the host fee, that'd be great. But it, but it does set the, it does set the stage for the Solid Waste Master Plan that we'll be accepting on September 8th. Hopefully you all have had a chance to take a good look at it. It's very comprehensive. There's still, there's still costs that have to be figured out on that, but it's, it's getting to the endpoint. So thank you again, Drew, and you guys negotiating skills are excellent. Yes?
Coconut Creek, Deerfield being my district, and be very contentious, they also, they complimented our county attorney on his professionalism and his staff, and really kudos to getting that done.
Yeah. It was actually nice to see you in action. I, it was like, I haven't been in a negotiation with you, so it was like, but watching both you guys, it was like, these guys know what they're doing. I just, I kind of sat back and just, you guys enjoyed the talk and so it was fine. Anyway, good job, good job. In Hollendale, finally, the new, the Hollendale Library is going to be reopening and that will be a soft opening on August 27th and the grand opening is on September 5th. Anything we can do to get the Hollywood open quicker? Please, let's do that.
It's killing me.
It's killing me. It's killing me. I don't have to tell you why. I will, I will. And I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor, I had one other, I forgot to make one brief comment. When I saw the DOGE documents initially, the request, I said, there's no way that the county staff can possibly respond to everything in nine days, every contract in the last, I mean, it was just amazing. And I would be remiss if I didn't compliment county staff. I was talking with Monica and our financial people and everybody, our assistant county administrators, our deputy, they were working, you know, 18-hour days. It was just amazing that they were able to respond with, I think it was literally terabytes of data that were sent in nine days. I was confident that we were going to need to put in a request for extension of time because they were asking for so much information. And I just wanted to extend my compliments to staff that they were somehow able to get this done and the, their hours were just absolutely amazing during that time.
As if they had nothing else to do. Because it was like two weeks of having to do, drop everything and do this in the middle of budget season. So to, you know, to your credit, somehow you were able to do everything.
She wants to raise.
I know. So it's a lot, all admin, great job on it. With that, county auditor. Okay. Also, great job on that. I know you had a chance to meet with the first, those nine people from DOGE and I think you greeted them and had, and everything I heard was you kind of set the tone, which I appreciate very much. So thank you. County Administrator.
I have a little bit to say.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. First and foremost, thank you all for your support because as you, just to keep on the theme of what you've been sharing, thank you for your support and your confidence and our team, honestly, because, and I want to publicly thank our staff because, like you've said, we literally had to drop almost everything else we were doing to be responsive in the timely fashion because we did not, to me, it wasn't an option. We needed to make sure that we complied as we have every single time on the dates that were given to us. And it was a very, very hefty request. I'm just really proud to serve in this role and be able to stand alongside the people that I get to work with. We're no other professionals like this I've ever seen and worked with. So thank you to all of my team for that and thank you for your support. Couple of things, want to make sure you guys, obviously you have seen, on July 7th, I was able to send out a leadership realignment memo to you all and to our larger organization. You may notice that Kim looks a little different to my right. We now have a new deputy county administrator. I want to welcome, she's a little taller, but Kevin, I'll make sure I tell her, I'll actually tell her to watch this little segment. But, but all joking aside, I'm really proud to have Kevin sitting in the deputy role. And, and, you know, he's, he's been here just for a short while with the county. We're still checking out to see if that's going to work out after 35 years. But, you know, a wealth of knowledge and experience and really happy to have him serving in this role. Obviously, you know, the rest of that memo, really proud to have the rest of my team, some of them promoted and some of them with additional and different responsibilities. Michael Ruiz, still in the assistant county administrator role now, in charge of the agenda. So.
I asked him to sign the first ones.
There you go.
Autograph copy.
So far, so good. We got one out here. And Lorette, new assistant county administrator promoted, Sandy promoted also as well, and Isami Ayala-Coyaso, I think you've all had a chance to meet her briefly, some of you a little bit more. We got to bring her over from Palm Beach County, an amazing addition to our team as well. And Mary Bell Feliciano promoted in the director role of OESPD. So I want to make sure I welcome that, all of those individuals to our team officially. You may want to go look at our new org chart finally, after how many years. It now actually reflects the distribution of all of the assignments in our, in our administrative structure. It's online. Yesterday, 22-page document that I released in the morning, I had it ready at the end of the day, as I promised I thought I would on Tuesday, but I didn't want to get lost in the shuffle around five o'clock, so I wanted to wait until first thing in the morning yesterday to release it. Many of the things that you all talked about today are actually seen in this 22-page document. You know, Commissioner Udine mentioned the podcast, it's Broward Connects, Office of Public Communications, amazing. We're trying to step up that game also about outward facing and educating the community about the things that we do. That's, that's actually on page 19 of 22, talks about the first three episodes of the podcast. We're going to be reaching out to every commission office because we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to make a guest appearance and visit and have a conversation about a topic that is important for you or your district. And we'll partner with an agent, one of our county agencies to make sure we're highlighting that. And I know Commissioner Fisher, you actually mentioned Jack Sparrow. He has actually served as a double for, in movies as Jack Sparrow, for, as a pirate. It's amazing, the pictures I've seen. I've never seen him in, in the actual get-up, but I've seen the pictures and it's remarkable. And honestly, you know, I think Norman might have smiled at your, at your mayor's meeting because he got booed. So I think he appreciated that. Commissioner Davis, congratulations on the naming of the facility also. Commissioner Mackenzie, I'm trying to make sure I've hit some of the things that you guys had responded and asked me questions during your non-agenda comments. We're going to have some data on North Perry and the comparisons provided. We'll get it to all the board if you're interested, but we'll make sure that that is already in the works. And when you mentioned about the budget process, as soon as we finished the budget last year, we immediately started, particularly with BSO and some of our external agencies as well, to have those conversations. So that has actually been in the works. I think what you're seeing right now is, I think that there's, we just haven't heard any official response back on some of those particulars from BSO. And I know Michael has been actively engaged and trying to get some official correspondence back, but we will absolutely try again. And Senator Geller, to your point, you know, that we'll reach out again today in writing just to confirm. So that's being addressed. Commissioner Rogers, you had mentioned Brightline and FVC along with Parks, but I'll get to that in a minute. We have individual briefings that I think were set with all commissioners except for two. I think we're still trying to get scheduling on two, with two commissioners to give individual briefings so that we can get you up to speed on some of that. I know last night, our transit, our transportation director, Corey, sent out an email to all of you. It's a little bit lengthy, but I wanted to make sure, we wanted all collectively to make sure that you saw some of the conversation that we're having with SFRTA so that you would see where that is as it relates to state funding and how that could impact the tri-county area. And Parks, you know, you will see and note that in the budget, while we had to, a very difficult challenge ahead of us in putting together, like you said, in the middle of all of this craziness we had this summer, a very fiscally responsible budget that was recommended to you all on July 15th. Parks fared very well and as did some of our other agencies, some other ones did not fare as well, but where we heard you loud and clear about the priorities of this commission, the alignment of the budget is reflective there. And, and there were 159 positions cut from the budget, in the recommended budget, and we did everything we can to. we did everything we can to ensure that the, the needs of the most vulnerable of this community were maintained and addressed. The, something else, Mayor Fur, you mentioned the, I believe it was you, the Safe Haven operation, the, the emergency operation, that's also, I think that's on page 18 of this document. That was all hands on deck as well. If you can imagine, guess what was going on that day? We had Doge visitors. So part of our visit included, you know, kind of having an ear over there, and when, so the multitasking and the juggling continues that we do very well as an organization, because we've got really amazing professionals. And then solid waste, again, you know, Drew and your team, amazing, Kevin, Kevin and Kevin, thank you. So again, it just really shows the professionalism and really the depth that we have collectively in this county on the bench. Bob, thank you for, for joining me in the welcoming of Doge. I think that was a good story to tell. We got to share that, in addition to our external audits that we have, very, very robust external audits. We have an independent auditor that sits with us every day and looks over the shoulder, and it's a great function, because we get to learn every day also how we can continue to do better. And we shared that, I think it's on average, more or less about 30 audits a year, that our team collectively works with his office to provide information, and, and it's, and it's good. It's a good exercise, it's a good learning experience. Sorry I was very long-winded, but there was a lot to share, and I really wanted to make sure I got all of that to share with you guys.
A couple of things, real quick, that are, you're bringing a couple of things to mind. One, with that solid, with the Monarch Hill now passed, I think it's important that we expedite whatever it takes, so that they can, if in the need of, we have hurricane, if there's a need to be able to bring hurricane debris somewhere, they currently can't take it there. Whatever permits are needed to get through, if we can expedite that quickly.
I thought we did that to our own.
We can, we can do both, but it's, you want both, you want to have, you want to have both. Second, with regard to the SFRTA, there's a couple of things that, when, some of us are on particular committees, that it may be worthwhile giving a report. You know, you're on the SFRTA, and you're in the middle of all of, you know, you've got access to information none of us have.
Be happy to do that.
I'm on the TDC. Maybe we should be using a little bit of our off-agenda time to give, just to give a little bit of flavor of what's going on. I'm just thinking that.
That'd be, that'd be great. Actually, my meeting's tomorrow, tomorrow morning too, so yes, next, next commission meeting, I'll give a report.
That'd be great, because that's a lot of stuff.
You're right.
Yeah. And likewise on the TDC.
Okay.
I'll try to do the same thing.
Okay, great.
I have two more quick things.
Yep.
Two more very quick things. You had mentioned Hollendale reopening library, and I was going to mention it, so I'm glad you did. That is September 5th. All the commissioners were invited to that, I want to make sure that everyone knows about that. And also, on, when you mentioned Hollywood, I don't know if you've heard the news, we're going to, I'm probably going to get in trouble from my library director, because we wanted to do an official announcement, but we are looking to do a pop-up library in Hollywood to, at least to help offset the timing with the real reopening of the actual facility. So our team has been creatively trying to figure out ways to provide more library services since that library's out of commission for the moment.
Yeah, and, and I hope people realize that they can, they can do a lot of stuff online.
Absolutely.
They can actually get books online, they can get electronic books online, they can have it sent to other libraries, they can order it online, it'll go right to whatever's near them.
Yeah.
We don't even, we don't have any online, we don't even need the library.
It's still worth going, no. Incredible value is still going.
I know, I know, I know.
And, Mr. Mayor.
County Attorney.
One more, just a reminder, Tuesday, we have budget, final budget workshop. It'll be in room 430, and we've got the remaining items that you have not heard from, from our team is TDT, Transportation Capital, Surtax, General Capital, and then the final general fund wrap-up. So those will be the last remaining things you guys have not had a chance to hear from the presentations from our staff.
Okay, great, thank you. County Attorney?
Mayor, I'll be under, under a minute. First of all, thank you for the, the kind words on solid waste. It was a great, great team effort, and you were a big part of the team. As you know, with any sort of settlement, it starts by setting the tone. So, you know, the lawyers are on one end, sort of litigating aggressively and hard, and encouraging people to come to the table and get things worked out. But it was the meeting we had in Josh Rydell's office, settlement conference, where you were there with your, your normal, very collegial approach, that I think got us off on the right foot. And this is a very, very good outcome. You know, the goal for settlement is always to achieve a win-win, excuse me. Sometimes you talk about achieving a win-win, but it's not true. You know, you hold your nose and you sign something. This is truly, in my opinion, a win-win outcome. So thank you, and also congratulations to Commissioner Davis as well. I've never had anything named after me, I don't know that I ever will, but it's very nice to be sitting next to someone who has, so. And that's it. See you all on, on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.